Good evening. It's wonderful to have everybody here to our November 7th City Council meeting. I'd like to go ahead and start with the roll call, if you may.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember B Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
We will now have an invocation from Chris from Shepherd of the Hills. Please rise.
Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for the beauty and provision of your creation as a whole, and this community in particular. We pray for the safety and well-being of all who live and visit Canyon City. Bless the work of these public servants that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Send your spirit to guide their conversation and decisions, and help them to use their authority to serve faithfully all the people and resources entrusted to their care. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, united, equal.
Now is a wonderful time to have council member announcements, if anyone has anything. Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to recognize that this is the 100-year anniversary of the Four Mile Community Club in our town as well. I had the pleasure of going over there yesterday for their open house, and it's really a fantastic resource that they offer to our community. Anybody, member or non-member, can rent it out for events and functions. And it's just a great part of our history, so just wanted to recognize that they are celebrating 100 years this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I don't believe this is on the agenda, and this is really more of a question than an announcement, whether there's anything that we need to talk about informally tonight regarding the community agency funding requests. There were some things that came in kind of after the subcommittee's meetings. I just wasn't sure how that was going to be handled.
Ryan.
Yeah, any of those types of questions will be brought forward at the time that we bring the community agency forward for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to let the community know that I was able to go to the mayor's summit in Denver about two weeks ago and represent Canyon City, as we met with mayors from all over the state of Colorado. Was really happy to, especially, I guess, have an opportunity today to let the police department know that it was a really big bragging moment when there was this big, like, ah, what do we do about staffing our police department? And I'm like, Canyon City's nailing it. We are doing really good with our staffing of our police department. Really had a major turnaround in the last few years from going from having to have a climate assessment to having almost every single position filled. And that it was just awesome that we could have the opportunity to share those successes that you have been doing, and we're just really proud of our men and women in blue, and thank you for all that you do to represent us. And really excited to have an opportunity to recognize our officers today and their achievements as well. There's also another number of things everyone's really struggling with, affordable housing, among other things. Part of that affordable housing conversation, CML is going to be really active in that coming from the state and Governor Polis's office is that they're kind of blaming municipalities for having too strict of codes for building, and they're going to really put that on the city council. CML is going to really fight against that. Another kudos to Canyon City is that I was again able to point out that we were able to take advantage of DOLA's grant money and totally scratch our zoning and a lot of our requirements and start all over again and really have something that was really top-notch. And that as cities, we are, the mayor, it's a clear message was, if there's anything we need to do to make housing more affordable or to bring housing into our communities, we are doing it. And I want to say that Canyon City absolutely is doing anything and everything we can to provide that. But there could be a fight on our hands, and I think we're going to be important players in that conversation, especially because of our award-winning comprehensive plan that we've recently had. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a general government meeting here this next Wednesday, November 9th at 6:00 PM. We're going to be talking about festival liquor licenses, ordinances, and updated medical marijuana ordinance.
Thank you.
And although not a function of this council, that'll be preceded by a URA, an Urban Renewal Authority meeting, Canyon City Cares, here at 5:00 PM.
Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks. I should mention too that the city's Energy Franchise Committee or Energy Advisory Committee meets on second and fourth Mondays. So our meeting next Monday at 10:00 AM here at City Hall. We're going to have a presentation from someone from the city of Taos, New Mexico, who has worked with a nonprofit there that's connected to the local electric co-op, and he's going to talk about what their experiences have been there and the community just taking more control of their electricity system and how it's designed and what kind of power they use or what kind of generation they have. So I just wanted to mention that 10:00 AM here a week from today.
Thank you. I'd like to turn the time over now to Chief Schick, if you wouldn't mind. Coming up, we have some really awesome and significant investments in our community by our officers and commanders, and please fill us in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just ask for Commander Walsh and Officer Lettabor to come on up, and Corporal Snyder. I don't know, did Mr. Bell join us on Zoom?
I have no idea.
Okay, alright.
So there's one attendee on Zoom. No, it's not.
Well, Commander Bell's, he's looped into this group. Of course, he's at the National Academy, so we'll be sure to celebrate him when he gets back. But I want to thank you for taking time and sharing space on your agenda this evening. And as well, you know, I appreciate those accolades, Mayor. But I have to say, we, the men and women of CCPD are working very hard to deliver that service excellence, and everyone remains committed, but it absolutely takes village. And without council's ongoing support, I don't know that we would be as successful today as we are. So my hat's off to council. Thank you. So I want to take a moment just to recognize some hard-working staff here at the PD. This evening, I want to take a moment and recognize some milestones in a career path of service. In today's climate, surrounding law enforcement's becoming more difficult to attract and retain quality people. We're one away. In this light, the significance of tonight's employee recognition cannot be overstated. I want to recognize both their community commitment and service excellence based on their time in grade and service with the Canyon City Police Department. I'd like to recognize, as I mentioned earlier, Commander Tim Bell for 10 years with Canyon City Police Department and 21 years in law enforcement. I'd like to recognize Commander Walsh with 10 years with CCPD this year and 14 years in the law enforcement industry. I'd also like to recognize Corporal Phil Snyder for 11 years of law enforcement service with the Canyon City Police Department. And last but not least, the pup of the group. I want to recognize Officer Zach Lettabor. Zach hits his five-year service mark with the city this year. That mark is significant for several reasons, but mostly because it's generally about the time that an officer becomes truly independent, working with very limited supervision, and becomes that mentor for the next group coming in. So we're really proud of Zach and all the work that he's brought forward. And it's also significant because tonight is his five-year chip, so to speak, in that he will receive his Canyon City Police Department badge personalized with his name and his badge number on it. So gentlemen, on behalf of the mayor and city council, I thank you for your dedicated and selfless service to the city of Canyon City.
Yes.
Phil, Phil, thank you. Phil actually got his 11 years last year, but we've been able to recognize him publicly. This is something new we're going to try to do and make sure they all get the recognition that they deserve.
Excellent. Let's get a picture with everybody.
Yeah, please.
Ryan, can you please go over the consent agenda for us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on October 17th. The special city council meeting October 10th. Meetings, October 10th and October 9th. October 24th was the Energy Committee. October 27th through the 28th was the community agency funding. Item 8B was to authorize donations or disposition of police department-found bicycles. 8C authorized a surplus equipment list and disposal according to city purchasing policy. And 8D is to receive and file list of bills.
Are there any questions for Ryan? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda. Councilmember Smith.
Well, Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion in the second. Councilmember Schmisher.
Sorry, I didn't get to my button quite in time.
Sure, plenty of time for discussion.
I guess I was just a little bit, not about the consent agenda, but about the agenda writ large. I was a little bit concerned to see ordinance 19 on here. I know that we've talked about business licensing and some of these changes over a series of different general government meetings, but I don't think that we've actually seen it in this form. I think we've seen a lot of different ideas and a lot of different concepts over a lot of different meetings. But I thought that our new plan was to introduce, have a version of the bill at a city council meeting and then refer it to General Government or Vision Committee for actual initial discussion. So I was just a little bit concerned to see ordinance 19 in here.
Ryan, do you have a reaction?
Yeah, we'd started that prior to the council direction of putting it back on, referring it to the committees. If council would like to do that, we can certainly do that. We're trying to clean up the ordinance before licensing starts for 2023.
And I actually. Yes, I have a comment on that also. The, one of the things I did go through, I did go through that ordinance, and I do have extensive comments. But I just wanted to say that one of the reasons that it's important to reach out to the regulated community is so that when we have an opportunity to review an ordinance for language and appropriateness and the changes, that our public can have that, or the regulated community can have that same opportunity. And so I think it's important for us to be able to reach out to them, and even if we're dealing with minor word changes or changes required by the state, I still think it's important to have that reach out to the community because it gives them a chance to come in, for instance, if there's something that's required by the state, to hear. You know, if we have a community member approach and ask a question, we do have our attorney here who can answer things that are on those types of issues. And so it's good for the, I think it's good policy for us as a council to make sure that when we're looking at changes, even minor ones, to ordinances, that we do have, that we do reach out. And especially in the case where we're talking about, although in this case, we've got several different sections that involve several different communities within our boundaries. It is important to be able to reach out to all of them. For instance, we may have been looking at changes concerning people who do yard work for, as a commercial enterprise. And some of the others, just to, if I can get to that real quick. The, some of the others where we're looking at are security guards, trash haulers, pawnbrokers. Pawnbrokers have been a hot topic before, and I think it's, even if the language is minor, it's important to be able to reach out to them. Because, as city administrator, you have the ability to propose changes to regulation. We, as the city council, as elected members of the public, we are their representatives. And it's important, for me anyway, to have the people that we represent notified of those potential changes and that there's going to be a discussion, and we welcome input.
Um, so is, based on those comments, do you want to revise your motion, or are we wanting to move forward? Maybe we already have a motion in the second.
So I guess I'm confused. Are we talking about the consent agenda, or are we talking about the discussion items?
Well, I'm just saying we're approving the agenda and consent agenda. So if there was a desire to maybe take that item off tonight's agenda, now would be the time to do that. We do have some comments from Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I would prefer to leave it on the agenda since the discussion of it has already started. And then when we get to that item, we can see where it goes. That would be my preference is to leave it on.
So there has been a motion in the second.
To approve the agenda.
To approve the agenda and the consent agenda as is. As safe, what we can do is just go ahead and take a vote if you want to keep it as is, and you vote yea. And we can move forward and address it at that time, that item at that time. It could be tabled. Or you can vote no, and we can have another motion. Councilmembers.
The, Madam Mayor, I think that if we approve the agenda, that means that is, that the, I guess we can always table it at the time that.
Yes, yeah, you can have discussion over it. We can have lots to talk over it. And if the council as a whole decides, it could be tabled.
I think, though, then we also are setting the precedent of saying that it's okay to bring ordinances for penal ordinances forward without following the process that we have now directed. So that, I mean, I will vote no, and that is why I'm voting no.
Well. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Given that, I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda with the exception of, so the penal ordinances are which? Which ones? Ordinance 19. I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda.
We already have a.
So.
So, so if he was the maker of the motion.
He was not.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the maker of the motion could make it a friendly, and the second could, if so desired. So if the desire is to take ordinance 19 off the agenda, if the maker of the motion desires to do it, it's friendly, it can be a friendly amendment.
Okay, I will amend to take ordinance 19 off the consent agenda. And I will second that.
So there's been a friendly amendment to, on the motion to take ordinance 19 off the agenda, and there has been a second. Is there any discussion? We'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Hi.
Schmisher.
Hi.
B Smith.
Hi.
Stein.
Hi.
Tracy.
Hi.
Worthington.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick.
Hi.
Okay, it passes. We are taking ordinance 19 off. Would like to bring that to Wednesday meeting, a general government probably meeting. If we can fit that in there somewhere so we can have some further discussion, but absolutely want to invite those parties that are affected to attend if they so wish. Anything else for direction for council before we move on with the agenda? Or for staff? Councilmember Tracy, did you, I didn't know if I changed your name. Did you still have anything to say?
That's fine. Thank you.
Alright. Alright, in that case, all of a sudden, our agenda just got a lot shorter, which I'm not going to complain too much about. We had a lot on our plate. But I had similar reservations, so I think the right thing happened. Ryan, do you have an administrator's report you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, we have the written reports in the packet. I think the big news is that we've made an offer and Public Works Director has accepted. Leo Evans will be joining us as our Public Works Director starting in January, and he's making arrangements to move here as we speak. So very excited to be able to bring a Public Works Director on board. He has quite a bit of experience doing the same role in Muskegon, Michigan. And prior to that, he worked for the Michigan Department of Transportation, so he speaks DOT.
I like it.
In the interest of time, I don't have anything else, but I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the report.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick.
I have two questions. Under information technology, the second bullet said continued evaluation of possible ERP systems, and ERP stands for?
Enterprise Resource Planning.
I'm sorry, Resource Plan.
Yeah, so financial management type system.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies that. And then the, on the next page, the top bid, it said, open the bid and identify a possible project management platform for citywide use. The, is there, do you have some other details on that?
Yeah, we've been looking for a long time for a project management system with Gantt charts and things like that that could be used across many different city departments. Different departments, we're using different software, Excel, and, you know, various things. So trying to put everything into one place where we can do project management. The vendor that we're looking at is called Monday.com.
And Cartograph doesn't have those capabilities?
Cartograph does not have that capability.
Okay. Thank you.
And I had a curious question. It talked about the installation of security cameras at some previously designated parks. We did somewhat recently have some vandalism at one of our parks that had some threats associated with it, and they were apprehended quickly. Thank you CCPD for the dedication for making that happen, especially with the nature of those threats. I was curious if those cameras played any role in that.
Yeah, luckily, the cameras at that particular park had just been installed, and they did help with identification of the vehicle.
Fantastic. Right, good to know. Thank you.
That's a new one.
That's a new one? Oh, okay, go.
Well, actually, it's a follow-up. So will Cartograph be able to be integrated into the new project management software? The issue is that back when Cartograph was first presented to city council, it was presented as a way to manage our projects in the city. Now, that's not, it was not a planning software so much as a, you know.
Yeah, so.
Recordation.
Yeah, it does the work orders and things like that.
Yes.
Yes, but as far as integration into the platform, I don't believe so. I'd have to ask Elijah about that.
The, would you please follow up with him? Because the, I want to make sure that, that if we've committed to a platform and we need to look at compatibility issues so that we don't lose synergies that might be available.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Any other questions for Ryan? Then I would like to move on to item 10A, and this is a discussion considering a request made by the Fremont County Community Concert Association. I see that John's coming up. Does staff want to say anything first before we invite John to address council?
Tammy, do you have a couple of comments?
Previously, when, well, last year when we had the community agency funding meetings and the funding was recommended for Fremont County Community Concert Association, we, the community committee wanted to make sure that we actually had expenses happen before funding was released. And so this is a request for their funding and to be released, and I'll turn it over to John to explain what's going on.
Thank you. John Stone, President Fremont Community Concert Association. I think I saw most of you about a week ago. Maybe a little bit of history might be useful. Fremont Community Concert Association dates back to 1947. In that time, it's been ringing five to six performers yearly. You know, mostly international, international performers to Canyon City. Sometime during that process, and I wasn't there at the first concert. The, sometime during that period, our national booker started off having the performers offer what they called the student outreach or master classes. We identified this really early as being an opportunity to get these artists in front of kids primarily high school age who might be looking at a professional music career. That's not an easy career, as you can well imagine. The artists we had just last week, Janyum Kim. Korean-born concert pianist, fantastic. She was heading out to a 17 concert event tour. It's not normal for her to do that kind of thing, but, you know, have the kids better understand what's all about. It's about there, about an hour and a half, or maybe actually more closer to an hour and 10 minutes. They, a little bit of entertainment, lots of questions, and over time, you know, we started having, you know, a couple hundred kids attend. Lots of great questions and lots of interest in what they were seeing. The, we asked the city to be involved. And in history, we were just doing general support. But it became clear that we ought to be able to have something that is more of a clear partnership. And these student outreach concerts became that opportunity. Everything was going along just fine until the bug hit. Um everything was going along just fine until the bug hit. Um artists quit traveling. Um the high school quit off uh school system, quit how wanting to get kids together in that kind of a place. Um we actually were and likely would have been able to do it as far as the artists. Uh last year, or the first part of this year, with the exception of the fact that. The school didn't want to do it. Um Jay Jayun Kim would have been. Um would have been a logical uh person that for this uh this time, however. Um sure, her travel schedule just simply didn't permit her to take that kind of time. Um we have asked, uh actually, a couple of years ago, um. A member of the community agency committee, I think it was you, John, that suggested that we amend our request to include language. That would anticipate this, and and we have done that. So there is language in the event that. Things can't come together, that you could logically uh fund this. I will remind you that we do um funding for. Um we do allow students accompanied by a member free ad- free admission to our main concerts also. So, uh you know, we we tr- w- we try to do what we can to support. You know, like uh youth as they might want to consider. Um a professional music career. That's what it's all about. Toward that end, uh we weren't able to pull off a. An event where we could res- present uh your finance officer or bill. Uh so I sent them. Like the reasonably worded letter to ask ask y'all to fund fund the provide that funding anyway. Um with that, I will entertain questions.
So John, in your request to release those funds, is that to help fund the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three outreach program? Or is it going to go to something else?
Um well, it's it's, you know, your your restrictions on us using money. Outside your fiscal year, not necessarily consistent with our schedule. You know, uh obviously, uh we're looking at uh. The we're looking at funding at least one this year that'll come together. It'll be a thousand dollars. We're asking uh. We ask for, I think, six or seven hundred dollars this year, so the six hundred would be very helpful to fund that.
Okay, I see. Any other questions for Mr. Stone? Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there another expense that um that the Fremont County Community Concert Association has incurred? That you could submit a receipt for? I don't know whether it's if the students who attended um missed Jayun Kim's concert, um if you.
Her 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 bill for then for for performers is fifteen thousand dollars. I'll be delighted to send that one.
No, what I, sorry, um sorry, John, let me let me be more clear. I'm wondering if there's another expense that is along these lines. You had mentioned that the students who attended that concert were um permitted to attend for free. I don't know if you kept track of how many of them actually attended and how many of those tickets, how much those tickets would have been. That meets the intent and the spirit of what the community agency funding was awarded for. Um I think it it would be really hard to just write a blank check for six hundred dollars because it is a reimbursement program, so I'm wondering if you have. Any other receipts that kind of meet the intent and the spirit of providing access to high quality concerts to our our students? Do you have any other receipts along those lines?
Not, no, we don't this year.
We have a concert that's coming up, though, right?
Well, uh.
That students can attend for free.
You just, we just finished the first two, where they were very interesting dichotomy between Flash Cadillac and the concert pianist. Um the uh the Flash Cadillac concert was well attended by by uh young people. Uh I can't give you a count because we don't have tickets for that. Uh there were at least five, six, seven young folks at the Jayun Kim concert.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh John, I'm not sure that 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 you understood perhaps what Amy was suggesting. Amy was suggesting that if you had an expense uh in this year, twenty twenty two. Uh that could be that could be partially paid or wholly paid, uh even partially paid by the six hundred dollars. That would be easier to approve than to take budget monies from this year and try and apply it uh to next year.
If it if it needs to be student related, I do not. Otherwise, I have all kinds of receipts.
Okay. So I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the application in front of me to see exactly what we approved last year.
It should have been for student outreach program.
For the student outreach program, similar similar to what that we've seen in the past.
Yes, but it sounds like their future application does allow for some flexibility in the future because there's some things that are out of their. Hands, and yet they provide an excellent service of cultural arts and performing arts. In a community, which is there's a huge need for a a small town to have accessibility to those.
May I um may I read a a a sentence from the application from last year? We ask that the city of Canyon City recognize that situations developed during the year. That prevents scheduling student outreach, meaning concert events, and allows substituting support. For a concert series to satisfy the terms of the grant.
And that was in the request for twenty twenty two funds.
Yes, it was. And and I I I sure suggestion, I think.
Well, you still could submit a bill or a receipt for the last two concerts and note that it was attended by students.
We could do that.
Do that.
We could do that. Um. You, do you want a bill just for the six hundred?
Yes, it's for the six hundred.
Consider it done.
You can provide a copy of your actual bill, but you will only get the six hundred.
Really?
Yeah, only six hundred.
You know, Flash Cadillac was about five thousand, sixteen, yeah, uh the KJ Jayun was a little cheaper. I'll send you that one.
Sounds great.
So let's make sure that council is okay that it's not an official vote. Is it, it isn't shown here that it's?
Yeah, I I think uh we'd like to see a motion and.
Want to see a motion.
Um correct me if I if I go astray, but the motion that I would make is that um. We as city council would recommend that the Fremont County Community Concert Association submit the receipt and the application of the receipt. In accordance with their approved application of funding for dispensation by the finance director.
And I would second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call a.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Hi.
Schmisher.
I.
B Smith.
Hi.
Stein.
Hi.
Tracy.
Hi.
Worthington.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick.
Hi.
It passes. Um thank you for coming to council. Thank you for all you do to bring in the performing arts to our community and. And it's particularly for your outreach to our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and let's hope the bug puts us back, our lack of bug puts us back on a normal situation.
Yeah, I hope to attend one of your concerts. You sound very awesome. It is time to move on to item ten B. This is a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance seventeen, series of twenty two. Twenty twenty two. This is concerning penalties for violating the city's backflow prevention and cross connection requirements.
Uh this is a second reading. I'm not aware of any additional public comment that we've had. Turn it time over to Water Superintendent Payne.
Thanks. Uh as we talked about before, you know, this is intended to kind of have a nice little middle ground uh to try to get some enforcement. Going on our backflow testing program. So I won't belabor the point since we've talked about it a couple of times and just be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate the staff's intent for those ordinance and what what you're trying to accomplish in terms of ensuring that we do have that middle ground. Where you don't have to turn off folks' water when perhaps there's another middle ground solution. However, I remain very concerned that the changes proposed by this ordinance as written do not meet the staff's stated intent. Um in two key regards, the stated intent is that the ability to impose fines would not begin until accounts are sixty days past due. However, the ordinance as written states that fines, that the fines could begin to be imposed as soon as the backflow. Preventer maintenance testing is out of date, and as we heard at our general government or vision committee meeting, sometimes it's very hard to get those scheduled on time. Um due the due to the lack of providers in our area. Um the second area of concern that I have is that the stated intent is that the fines would not be imposed until there have been three notices from the water department. And that the backflow policy for testing timeline, as included in this second reading. Um states that it is ten days from the notice that the fines will be enforced. However, the ordinance as written states that the fines start the day, the notice of violation is served on the owner or operator. So I think that those are two really big differences between the city's stated intent and the city's ordinance and how it could be carried out. Um I do have two proposed um minor wording tweaks that I think would address both of those. Um concerns that I have and ensure that the ordinance as written aligns with the city's stated intent. Both within the water district's stated intent of this particular policy, as well as city council's direction that we be business friendly and accommodating. And understanding of the challenges that our our local businesses face.
So for those ways, can you please give us the section and. Um like the letters and numbers so that we can follow you.
Section two C.
Yeah, so. So my first one is actually section one G two D. So um in section one, G is policy, and then two actually outlines what violations are. Um and A, B, and C, I think, make perfect sense, like you, your backflow preventer. You know, it can't be removed or bypassed. You can't have an unprotected cross contamination. But I think D is where we get into some trouble because it says an approved backflow preventer is not maintained or tested in accordance with this chapter. Which essentially is saying that the day, if you're one day past due of your annual inspection, then you're in violation. So I would suggest that we add in within sixty days of the annual deadline so that we are giving. Um our businesses that grace period so that they can actually get that scheduled. Um if there is a backlog in the the, as I understand it, rather limited providers that provide that maintenance and testing. So I would suggest that section one G two D, um which is on the top of page two. Read unapproved backflow preventer is not maintained or tested within sixty days of the annual deadline in accordance with this chapter.
So before we move on to your next one, um I would like to have staff have an opportunity to give a reaction if this. Meets the intention that you wanted, or if you have any other recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely meets the intention as stated in this in this moment, you know, the. What I would worry a little bit about is it kind of cements policy into ordinance. So. It kind of hamstrings being able to change as as needed in the future, as well as, uh you know. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but. I'd be worried that it kind of uh forces us to impose a violation in sixty days, where maybe we would give somebody some extra time. You know, I don't, I would, I would hate for it to hamstring us to to force violation at sixty days, where normally we'd be like, okay. Maybe there was a reason that they go beyond sixty days, so we're not going to do that, but the ordinance is stating at sixty days we have to. Does that make sense?
It does, but I think right now is written, it's stating that you're in violation one day after. So this is actually giving more of a grace period than.
Well, it's not written to say that you are in violation one day. The possibility does exist, but it's not saying you're in violation.
Well, it says unapproved backflow preventer is not maintained or tested.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, I mean, your point's well taken.
Quite, yes, um recommendations.
Well, um it is up to council how they want to do this. The only thing, the risk, I believe, and maybe it is, it is. I I know it's unintentional with with changing the language, is when we put the policy into the ordinance. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment also sees that. And the concern I would raise, and it again, it is a, maybe it's a risk that council decides is worth taking. Is that it could suggest to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment that we are not. Enfor- enforcing our ordinance aggressively enough. And one of the first things that Travis asked. Um when we started looking at this ordinance is to identify what some of the issues were and what some of the remedies were. That the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment have in the event they are concerned with the city's enforcement of this policy. And they are significant um and include, you know, fines per day of up to a thousand dollars, and and there's a whole host of other remedies, so. The the interplay between policy and legislation here is important, and. Again, ca- council can absolutely do this. The risk I am concerned about is that it would appear to the CD PHE that we are not. Um as a matter of our legislation, as opposed to policy enforcing this correctly. That is not to say that our policy guidance that is outside of the ordinance can't provide the flexibility. For the backflow prevention, but to put that in ordinance, I think creates some risk.
It seems like we had this conversation. Okay, well, let's go ahead and move on to your other recommendations, then we can have a discussion.
And thank you, um Attorney Hoffman, for stating it in that way. Um that that does make it more clear to me. I went in the order of the ordinance. Um I think that the second one is more important from my perspective. And perhaps less potentially um concerning from a CD PHE uh perspective. Um so that is in section two C. Um so section two C currently states, the first line. Says that the. Uh civil penalties not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars per violation per day, starting from the day the notice of violation is served on the owner or operator. So again, this is like directly contradicting what our intended policy is, as well as directly contradicting the new timeline. Which states. Um. Sorry, which states the time that the fines will be ten days from, fines will be enforced ten days from notice. Um so this is saying that fines will be enforced starting on the day of the notice. Um I understand that in some instances, particularly for the violations outlined into A, B, and C. That you absolutely, like, those are serious issues, and you would want fines to be imposed immediately because you need to make sure that the black backflow preventers are. In place and not bypassed, but I would suggest that for um. Violations of two D, particularly if we are saying that you're in violation one day after. The stated um time period that we shouldn't be imposing fines on the day that the notice is served. So my recommended change would be to um. Cut the end of the first sentence, starting from the day the notice of violation is served on the owner or operator. So that the first sentence is just that you're authorized to impose and collect civil penalty is not to exceed the two hundred and fifty per violation per day. And then to add in a sentence that says for severe violations that pose a threat to human health and the environment. Penalties may start from the day the notice of violation is served, so that you're still giving that flexibility, and you still have that opportunity for the more. For the more serious violations. And I would suggest adding that sentence in um after the. Kind of in the middle of the paragraph where it says the amount of the penalty shall depend on the severity of the violation and threat to human health and the environment. That and then another sentence saying for severe violations, da 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 da.
Councilmember Tracy.
Trying to think exactly what I want to ask. I'd still, I was going to first ask. Well, if you reword that or add that wording, change the wording. Wouldn't we need a definition in the ordinance of what a severe violation is? I that would be my first question. I'm I'm just kind of struggling with the suggested change.
Sure, so in that sentence, I had included that pose a threat to human health and the environment. Which kind of mirrors the language from earlier in the paragraph, um and I think covers the A, B, and C. Um but gives you the grace on the D.
But does that, and I don't know the answer to this question, does that then put us. Uh contrary to what state law is requiring of us?
I- it's not contrary to state law, but I would have similar concerns. Um the current language. Authorizes, doesn't require, and one of the concerns with the language um referring to a severe. Violation, for lack of better terms, is what about persistent repeat offenders, for example? Where they they frankly know the process. Um. I I absolute, I absolutely appreciate the desire to put as much in the ordinance as possible. But I think the flexibility that allows the city to. The city to show in the event that the C D P H E is looking at the city for purposes of enforcement. That we have taken whatever measures are important will serve the city.
Do you see if there's language that could help satisfy a little bit of Councilmember Schmisher's concerns and yet not hamstring us or?
My re- my recommendation is the current language. Um I, I think. It absolutely requires discretion on beha- on behalf of our water superintendent and his department. And I appreciate that that is not an area where you necessarily feel comfortable in all circumstances and I understand the, the tension there. But from a regulatory standpoint. I would suggest that discretion is important so that if there is someone that. Is either a persistent violator. Or there's other circumstances that we can't even articulate today that we're able to have this language to show that C D P H E that we're vigilant.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, I guess, on the nature of the state penalties if they found. Excuse me, our program lacking, are those all sticks for Canyon City? Or are they, uh, or, or is it uh in the case like some federal agencies that come in and overfile? Uh so, so in other words, the state would skip the city and go directly to the violator? Or is this all penalties on the city?
It could be both. So it can be a penalty upon the violator, it can also be a penalty upon the city.
So, so both.
Yes.
And that, that includes up to um losing our water systems, is that correct?
Well, it can require redesigning our system. Um uh it can, it's, it can impose upon us treatment techniques. That may be of a higher, maybe more expensive. It, they, they have a lot of discretion in terms of tre- corrective action, and so this is an area where I'd rather frankly, the city have the discretion. And be able to tell the C D P H E that we are exercising it in an appropriate manner.
Councilmember Stein.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Right down at the bottom of that same paragraph, penalties may be appealed to the city administrator. Using, and we have a process for that. So if our attorney sees that uh that this language is safeguards us. And if you wonder what could happen, uh talk to the city of Colorado Springs. Um we're on a river. We have to be really careful about um preventing possible pollution. Because uh we can be sued by people down river for doing that. So uh I think that we do have a safeguard in there, that it can be appealed and there's. Under D, under D, there's appeal of civil penalties. So I think if our attorney thinks that this language should stand. That might be because none of us are attorneys. We might want to listen to him. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um so I'd like to make sure that I fully understand how the city is going to implement this then. Because I'm, I'm not comfortable with the idea that somebody would get a violation and be charged that violation. Starting that very same day for being one day late if they couldn't get their backflow preventer tested in time. So I want to, I, I fully trust our water superintendent and your um integrity and your desire to implement this correctly. You will not be our water superintendent for the, the rest of, of um, of all time and the rest of this ordinance. Um sadly, um but I, so, so I am concerned about that. A, but B, I would like to like fully understand, so the city has no intention. For backflow preventer testing and maintenance if somebody is within sixty days of charging them. A fine, starting the day that they give them a notice and, and charging them two hundred and fifty bucks a day, like. I just want to make sure that I understand.
That's correct. We have zero intention of doing that.
Okay, so even though this ordinance would give you that ability and would give future water departments that ability, you do not intend to use it.
Well, and to be clear, we've always had the ability to do, to shut their water off, they won.
Yes.
We've had that ability for three, four years, however long we've had this, a handful of years anyways. You know, again, the stated intent is to have less of a stick, you know, that's, that's the whole reason.
Can there be like a written policy or something of what, you know, the, the process is? And so it's, it's in black and white and apparent to all parties?
It, it, the, the answer is yes, I think we want to give ourselves the discretion to deviate. I mean, one of the issues. In this context is if we have someone that. Is especially of concern, we want to be able to address it. Um so that authority that's afforded to the director is to protect our system.
Um. I have confidence in you to do this.
The, the goal, I mean, the overwhelming goal is compliance. Um and I think, when, when Travis and I have discussed this, I mean, that, the goal always. On all of these is compliance and the tools we have today have not been successful. It's turning the water off. And so this is intended to be that interim step. Um and. Travis told you it's not his intent to exercise the authority that he's provided. Um if he has some user that puts, that is not following the ordinance that puts our system at risk, I'm going to suggest he should use it. I mean, that's, that's ultimately kind of the, the flexibility and discretion. I would recommend he needs to be afforded to protect the system.
Right, but your policy, which isn't in legislation, could reflect that?
Exactly, a- and, and accept out those circumstances we can't predict.
And this is very similar to when we were discussing code enforcement, um you know, legislation and, you know, having that po- that written policy. You know, the Water Department will have a written policy for this.
Any further discussion from the council? Are we ready for a motion? Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve ordinance seventeen, series of twenty twenty-two on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. We'll look forward to seeing that written policy. We appreciate that and thank you for your concerns to help make sure that we do our, our due diligence. Um, let's go to item ten C. This is also a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance eighteen, series of twenty twenty-two. And this is concerning notice of violation and penalty assessment for stormwater violations.
Uh again, this is second reading. I have not received any additional pub- public comments uh on this ordinance, uh this. Uh this is the inverse of the previous ordinance where um, you know, we're, we're trying to. Uh make sure that we have something in place to take care of uh chronic violators and severe uh offenders to. Uh stormwater discharge. Um happy to take any questions.
Glenda, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't. Um we discussed it, I think, pretty well at the general government meeting. There was no discussion at the last or at the first reading. Um I'm welcome to entertain any questions.
Any questions by council for the second reading? Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I want to make sure that I fully understand section one E one. Um which is the civil penalties authorized section. Um I think I understand it to mean that if an alleged violator takes the necessary actions within the ten day period. Then the civil penalties will not be imposed.
Correct.
Okay, I think the way that it's constructed right now, it's a very long sentence with a lot of. Independent, independent clauses. Um and I think that if we flipped the order of it, that, that may make that intention more clear. But I see uh Attorney Hoffman once again looking at me with grave concern.
Well, well, and, and here's the concern, and, and again, this is a, this is a policy issue and I, and I reflect that, but. The city's unlikely to impose the fines from the time the violation occurs. But it exists, even if it is cured, and I think similar to the, to the backflow prevention. The violation exists, and so frankly, part of my concern is the same as with backflow prevention. If this is a repeat offender. The city would have the ability to find the person if the notice of violation process isn't working. And so um under, the current language provides that flexibility. Um if you want to eliminate that flexibility, you could certainly do so, but that, that's what this language was drafted to accommodate.
I, I would um add to that, that our MS four, our general phase two stormwater discharge permit. Expressly states that we have to have the ability to address chronic and recalcitrant violators. This is one way to do it. Uh we do have written policy on how we. Um the discretion and how we determine if we should move forward to fines. Um and the one thing that the C D P H E, if they do an audit and they decide that we are not following. Our regulations in our um policies, they will call it a finding. And find us potentially in violation. We do need the flexibility um to make those determinations. Rather than having it hard and fast. We do have the policies on timelines when to move forward. Um our guidelines, that's up, this is for the uh C D P H E for their regulations.
Absolutely, just to respond really quickly, absolutely understood, and in no way am I saying that E two. That gives you the ability to waive the notice requirement should be modified. I, I understand that you need that flexibility to address those serious issues when they, when they occur.
So um, Ryan did.
But I, I was just going to say, uh, you know, we mentioned that the fine per occurrence per day for. Uh the previous ordinance from the state was a thousand dollars per day per occurrence. In this instance, it's fifty-two thousand dollars or fifty.
Uh fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollars per day per violation.
Is that an up to?
No.
No, oh no, it's not.
And they are looking at uh maybe next year increasing that.
Why?
So we charge two hundred and fifty dollars per day per violation.
Sorry, maybe I'll just sorry, uh Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick is next in the queue.
Uh so I have a, a question for Councilwoman Schmisher. Is there, do you, between the language that we have in our book? And the language that you suggested in your email, is there a substantive difference?
Well, so that's, that, that was going to be my follow-up to Attorney Hoffman, because I, I don't think that there is. But based on what Attorney Hoffman just stated, I believe that he thinks that there is.
I do.
So my reading of, of the way that it's written right now says, the end of it says. Or otherwise fails to cure the violations within ten days um after service of notice of violation. So to me, as this currently reads, as long as you, as long as you meet the, the cure within the timeframe provided, then you don't have to pay the fine. But what I heard Attorney Hoffman say is that that is not in fact the case.
Wha- wha- what, the, the language I don't think is as clear with, as it relates to chronic violators, and that's really the issue here. And so that's, the, the original language was intended to um capture what if we have the chronic violator? And um being able to impose immediately.
Any other discussions or comments from council? I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity participate. You can't remember, Schmisher, if you have.
And, and I think, I mean, I, I think your comment is spot on. You want to make it clear that if the violator takes the necessary actions within the ten day time period, civil penalties won't be imposed. That's where. I disagree. I, I, I do want the ability to impose the penalty. On behalf of the city, for the city to be able to do so, if it is a chronic violator.
Is there a reason then why that wouldn't be an E two instead of E one? My, my issue or my concern is I don't think E one talks about chronic violators or addresses that component of what you were saying at all.
I, I, I think taken together, we, that, this provides the flexibility to the city to address each violation as it determines appropriate.
And allows discretion.
Yeah.
If there, is there any other discussion?
Uh I just, but I'll, I'll follow up with you offline, I suppose, Attorney Hoffman, but I don't think that E, E one. E one, as it's written, you're saying that you can still impose the fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But they do not have to impose the fine, so they can do that for chronic violation, but they do not have to do that for, okay.
Correct, that, that is precisely the, the distinction, so that um the direct, the, the director is authorized, but not compelled. But if we have a chronic violator, I'm going to suggest the director is going to be much more likely to exercise that authority.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
Is there a motion? Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve ordinance eighteen, series of twenty twenty-two on second reading.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
B Smith.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you Travis and Glenda as well and Ryan for your work on this and we appreciate it. Also appreciate a lively discussion. I think it's always important to have that. And we are going to skip item D, that will be a future conversation. As that has been amended off of our agenda for tonight and go to item E, and that's the twenty twenty-three budget. This is introduction and adoption by title only, resolution fourteen, series of twenty twenty-two entitled. A resolution of the City Council of Canyon City, Colorado, summarizing expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget. For the city of Canyon City, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-three and ending on the last day of December twenty twenty-three. Ryan.
You, Madam Mayor, we, we have had the uh, the public hearing uh that uh third Wednesday in October. And uh the budget is uh ready for consideration. I will turn the time over to Tammy Nordak, our finance director, to. Uh talk about any changes uh since that public hearing.
So resolution fourteen, series of twenty twenty-two adopts the budget for the calendar year. Um beginning January one twenty twenty-three and ends the last day of December twenty twenty-three. Since the public hearing, we have had changes made to the proposed budget. And those are incorporated in this resolution. General fund was increased by one hundred sixty-four thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. Primarily, this is in non-departmental with carry forward for our access. Um control equipment. It has been on order all year. And we are not anticipating that it come in until next year. That is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars we're carrying forward. Um other minor changes were changes in, um we had a few. Health insurance changes, so that's what makes up the remaining four thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. Parks Improvement Fund was increased by seventy-four thousand sixty-one dollars. Seventy thousand of that was from the backhoe that was ordered for the cemetery. We received notification that production on it was to start, I think it was November second. So we will not be receiving that item until next year, and so we did include that.
Originally, our notice is that we were going to receive it by November second.
Yes, and so.
Seems like par for course these days.
Mm-hmm, yep. Um Conservation Trust Fund was increased by twenty thousand dollars and that is to cover fencing at. Um possible fencing at Depot Park. Quality of Life Fund was increased by seven thousand five hundred and three dollars. That was the city match for the revitalizing Main Street grant. Um it was overlooked in, in our initial budget, so we did catch that and clean that up. Water Enterprise Fund was increased by eighty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. The majority of. The majority of that is from the carry forward of the Grandview Bridge um water line, which that project is a hundred and twenty five thousand. But we had decreases in other lines, um other line items, partly salaries because of reallocations. We went back through after um after we had a meeting and somebody pointed, we were pointed out that we needed to look at some allocations again, and we made sure that we got all those corrected and um so that did kind of offset there. The Stormwater Enterprise Fund um was increased by two thousand eight hundred and sixty seven dollars, and part of that is it's mainly because of the reallocations of our salaries. Other than that, all the other funds remained the same. So with that, I'll turn it back to counsel.
Thank you for your hard work on this.
Okay, thank you.
For the um the changes. This really for the benefit of the public, so that we did have a very thorough like line by line conversation and examination of this twenty twenty three budget, and it's and it's a size that we can go down to the penny. Like, we really want to make sure that every single penny is spent appropriately and appreciate the process that you all had with the department heads that were here to participate in making sure that we are responsibly spending our taxpayer money. So thank you for that. I would like for the benefit of the public, though, maybe have a little bit more conversation just based on the date, the records um article about the public hearing on the budget about all of the extra or new positions that are being added and maybe some of those motivations behind that and the necessities for it.
So uh we have a new position in IT. Uh, we have a two-person IT department, which includes the IT manager. Um, and we do not have enough staff to to cover the needs of the city. Uh, you could pretty much dedicate a full-time IT person to to the police department alone, so uh that was one of the uh additions. Uh, there was another addition for code enforcement, so we have one code enforcement supervisor and is it three Tammy? Officers uh to cover the entire city. Uh, so there's one code enforcement position uh being added to help uh with code enforcement. Um, you know, with um you know, we get a lot of requests through C Click Fix, and uh they're responding to both code enforcement uh issues as well as animal control issues, so they they pu- uh pull double duty there. Uh, we have a request to move from a uh part-time uh HR coordinator to a full-time HR generalist. Uh, again, our HR department is uh the director and that currently that one part-time person uh for an agency with a hundred and seventy five employees, uh that's uh very light from an HR standpoint and uh adding that full-time position will help with uh some of those HR duties. Uh, Tammy, you're gonna have to remind me which uh other positions I'm missing here.
Yes, and parks maintenance workers and.
Well, we have three um three parks maintenance workers. Part of that was actually eliminating four of the seasonal positions. We have had difficulty in actually recruiting and retaining um seasonal workers. We will get somebody on board. They might work a week, they might work a day, and then they get offered a full-time position somewhere else, and so we're just kind of the stopping ground, so um we're hoping by having the full-time positions with that, it will, you know, help us meet that our our needs of the Parks Department. The other one was converting a part-time position in um evidence. Right, wasn't it evidence?
Yeah, and evidence to to full time. Well, we're really backlogged on our evidence. To get accreditation, get our accreditation back, we need to get that cleaned up.
Yeah, that that is correct. And just to go back to the parks uh positions, um that Tammy's a hundred percent correct. You know, when we we get employees, uh we hire employees on um sometimes barely make it through the training process, and you lose those employees, so Parks Department, uh especially during the busiest time of the year, uh we're always kind of playing catch-up and uh and fortunately, uh the you know, it takes an effect on uh the team and the morale, but it also, you know, from the looks of the community and uh making sure that we're, you know, we're taking care of our parks as as best that we can, uh this is a change to try and address that.
Well, it includes our cemetery as well, which is huge times. But I don't want to use the word I was gonna say, because it's a cemetery, but but we, yeah, to and really, when we talk so much about providing really good quality customer service to our citizens, we have to have the people in place to provide that quality service that that is expected for our community, and this is part of meeting some of that demand from our citizens and for just some basic services that need to happen to keep this city going forward. Any other comments or things that this council would like to highlight or say concerning the twenty twenty three budget? Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank city staff. Um, the preparation of this budget takes a long time and a lot of hours and a lot of conversations by everyone across the city, but especially the the finance department is and especially the director. Nordick, and just thank you for the hard work and diligence and painstaking level of detail that you put into this. I think it's a really um amazing end result um and a lot and the result of a lot of hard work on your part and the the part of Administrator Stevens in particular, so thank you.
If there's no further comments or discussion, uh Councilmember Tracy.
I'm just ready to make a motion. That's okay.
That's wonderful.
All right. I move that we adopt uh resolution fourteen series of twenty twenty two.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hold up.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
B Smith.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
Aye.
Excellent. The budget has passed for twenty twenty three. It's awesome. Um, we have several more items on the agenda to go over. I just want to check with council. We have been in meetings nonstop since five o'clock. Do you feel like you need like a five-minute break? Are you just ready to keep? Go ahead.
I I like the idea of a brief break, but uh are we still going to take up item E two? The ordinance.
Yeah, that is still gonna be happening. So let's just take a quick, well, maybe instead of five minutes, just like a two or three-minute break and just um take care of some needs, and then we will get right back to it. We are E two. Also concerning the budget, this is introduction and first reading by title only ordinance twenty series of twenty twenty two entitled an ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, for the twenty twenty three budget year. Tammy.
Ordinance number twenty, series twenty twenty three, basically appropriates our budget um for twenty twenty three. So you just approved the budget. Now we need to appropriate it. Just so council is aware, we will have a change to the ordinance on second reading. We received notification Thursday of last week that a couple vehicles for the water department will not be delivered until at least um the end of first quarter, possibly into second quarter, because I'm not sure if their production date is now February. So there will be a slight increase to the water fund at at that point, but it was, we could not get it in in time for um this evening, so we just want to give you a heads up on that.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
And so that means monies will not be expended this year that we were planning on, so we're moving it into next year.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? A motion would be fantastic. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve ordinance twenty series of twenty twenty two on first reading.
A second.
A motion and a second have been made. Any discussion? Hold up. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
B Smith.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you again. Um, item S, introduction and first reading by title only ordinance twenty 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 two series of twenty twenty two entitled an ordinance increasing the base rate used to calculate stormwater management fees chargeable by the city's stormwater utility enterprise.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this ordinance is uh an increase to the stormwater rate to point zero zero five zero four one per square foot of impervious surface. This is an eight point two percent uh increase, uh mostly inflationary to help cover uh increasing uh fuel costs, materials costs, uh and staffing. Tammy, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
So the average increase for a resi- for residential property is anticipated at a dollar forty one per month or sixteen dollars and ninety one cents per year. That is based on the average of three thousand six hundred and eighty eight square feet of impervious area. The increase for the average increase for commercial is seven dollars and twenty six cents per month or eighty seven dollars and ten cents per year, and that's based on the average of nineteen thousand square feet of impervious area.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Director Nordic, I was wondering if you could give us a little bit more um contextual history and also prognostication for the future. Are we expecting, have we seen increases in this percentage um in the past couple of years? Are we expecting to see this same level of increase in future years? Um, I understand with the inflation, um the cost of materials, the cost of keeping good people on board that this is necessary right now, but I'm also concerned that if we continue to see eight or nine percent increases each year, that sixteen dollars a year quickly um becomes much more. Thanks.
The last, so last year, we had an increase of three percent. Um, the previous year, it was, I I can't remember what the percentage was for um those those rates, and I'm not sure prior prior to that.
And pre- previously, though, I I don't have the exact uh rate increases, but uh you know, there there were some higher increases uh more recently due to uh taking on the certificates of participation for the stormwater projects, and then uh there were also increases, higher percentage increases uh due to funding the back truck and the personnel to run the back truck. Um, one of the things that that we're looking at for future years, um we're actually in twenty twenty three, we're looking for a grant in twenty twenty four uh to help with a new rate study uh both for water and stormwater. Uh, so there there's um some loo- looking to that in the future to see uh to reset where we're at as far as uh the previous rate study from twenty seventeen.
Councilmember Smith.
Actually, that answers my question as well. Thank you.
Um, we have historic, I mean, historically, historically, there was never any rate increases, and we really got into a lot of trouble with per um taking care of our stormwater, not just the MS for permit, but with flooding all over Canyon City in every sector. There was kind of a discussion, you know, years, you know, when we had to do some initial rate increases that were big, that was really hard, and the discussion was just to do little increments every year just to stay on top of it. It seems like this year, instead of just keeping up with the needs of providing services, just keeping up with the inflation, which is really unfortunate. It's really hard to make those decisions when our citizens are more strapped, their paycheck is not going as far as it was even just a year ago, and so this is this is tough to do. Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd the I'd like to just add on to that, that that we have looked at this in the past. Uh, and at the at the time we'd had the original study done, we were, uh the stormwater department was losing money essentially. The 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 um income or taxes uh that the stormwater department could charge were not covering expenses, and we were having to make up monies from the general fund, and that is that is absolutely a a no-no, really. Uh, and don't forget, there's there's two parts to stormwater. There is our permit require uh permit requirements we have to comply with with the MS four permits, and then there is, which is a kind of a water quality issue, uh and then there is the water quantity issue. The water quantity issue, we've kind of taken off our plates. We've taken the pressure off of council to deal with that through the certificates of participation, which are funding um pretty big stormwater quantity uh projects. We will be faced with those same issues uh once we have completed the COPs, because we we still have a massive spending that needs to be done to be able to get water that that flows into the city, out of the city, and water that falls within the city, out of the city uh down to the river in a in a manner that uh meets meets um safety requirements, really is what it mostly is. Um, and and realize there are, there is some gray areas there. For instance, is the vac truck a quantity issue or is it a a quality issue? Uh, and those are those are sometimes hard decisions to make, but these, the increases that were that we that we um have to deal with, there is a an older study. And I did provide all of my files to our our water department head, and hopefully that he's able to make use of those, because I think I had some of those studies in there that maybe we're having trouble finding or whatever, but 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 this is, this is really something we'd we have to do.
Um, I would just like to point out that those COP money for water quantity problems, you can see that money at work um at East Roads where the Humane Society is. What major, major construction is happening down there right now is. And that is all to get stormwater to get to the river without flooding that entire street when there ever there's a slight rainstorm.
And and just to reiterate, that is for historic flows. That is not for the future Abbey.
Yeah, has nothing to do Abbey. When Abbey develops, they have to keep, take care of their stormwater on site. Um, also, I would just like to say that the investment in the backtrack has also been a really huge help. We are not having the flooding like we used to. And I'm just really thankful to um our fleet's director. Fleet, well, I don't know what his exact title. It's been changed a little bit recently.
Fleets and Facilities Director.
Facilities Director Jim Johnson, who's really the instigator of saying that this could be a solution to a lot of our problems, and it's been working out well, and I appreciate that. Any further discussion from the council? We can take a motion. Councilmember Tracy.
I move for approval of ordinance number twenty two series of twenty twenty two on first reading.
Well, second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll call it though.
Councilmember Dennehy. Schmisher.
Aye.
B Smith.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
Aye.
Thank you, council and staff. And this next item G is actually a way to save some money for some of our residents, and this is introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance twenty three series of twenty twenty two entitled an ordinance of the City of Canyon City amending section three point one two point zero three zero of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning certain sales tax exemptions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the state uh enacted some exemptions uh for incontinence products, uh period products, diapers, uh those items, and uh this would uh this ordinance would allow for those same exemptions to to be recognized by this uh Canyon City Sales Tax Code as well. Uh, so that this is uh what's before you for your consideration.
Have we been able to do any number crunching to find out what impact the exemption of these items for sales tax? for sales tax would have?
No, because we don't get that detail um, from the businesses or even into the state, from the state. We get basically lump sum of sales tax and we don't get what areas it's generated from. You know, by the business.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
So if we pass these exemptions, the businesses will be required to adjust how they, how their point of sales software to exempt these products from sales taxes, from city sales.
From city sales tax. They should already be adjusting them for the state sales tax so that it would just be an additional adjustment for the city sales tax.
For most of those products that are sold, they're big enough corporations that that's pretty, pretty probably doable. All right. Any discussion from council? Councilmember Dennehy.
Um, I have different feelings on this. Uh, I, I see the feeling behind it, but then on the other hand, we're, we're looking at, you know, we just raised stormwater, but now we're going to try to save tax money for just certain individuals. And I, I guess that's my biggest problem is, is, is this is just for certain people and it doesn't apply to all and I.
Babies?
Uh, I understand that. I have a, I had my son. I understand that. But you know, a lot of people, I don't know if taking the tax off of everybody or, or every product on these is the right idea. Um, if there is people who have problems, there's definitely, you know, with diapers and all that. I know that there's ways to uh, you know, people can get help. But you know, my opinion is, you know, we're, we're struggling because our budget is is low. We're looking at raising things because of our budget, but yet when we can take our sales tax off for certain items that not only do we make money off of, with the sales talks, sales tax from people in the city, but also people who are traveling through the city. And you know, I think that's something that we all need to look at is and, and this is, and I understand there's definitely people who need help and need help with these things, but I don't know if taking the tax off on just certain products, it's the right way to go.
Councilmember Smith.
I was just wondering if we could change the word period to menstruation.
The ordinance is written to mirror.
State.
The state.
Just checking.
Just for argument's sake, I'll say that like for stormwater, that's to benefit every single person in the community for sure that we all pay for it, but it all takes care of a universal problem where these products are ones that it's not, these aren't optional. These are like, you kind of have to have these. Makes it a little bit different.
And it affects the demographic of people that are on fixed incomes and other, other things.
As, as Mayor Pro Tim uh, Hammer mentioned, when we were talking about the stormwater ordinance, you know, those are enterprise funds. You can't cross co-mingle funds between general fund and, and those uh, enterprise funds as well, so that they do have to stand on their own.
I imagine that this probably isn't going to put that big of a dent in our general budget. It'd probably be pretty minimal, but it might be helpful to those individuals who are experiencing inflation in all of these products. Councilmember Schmisher.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion in addition to further discussion.
Um, is that okay, Tracy?
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, you were first in queue.
So I see if there's discussion.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty-three series of twenty twenty-two um, on first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We will take a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Schmisher.
I.
B Smith.
Aye.
Stein.
I.
Tracy.
I.
Worthington.
I.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Hi.
Right, the motion passes. There's some sax, tax savings for some of our citizens in Kansas. And we're going to go back to our water department. And this is item H introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance twenty-four series of twenty twenty-two entitled an ordinance amending certain water rate schedules set forth in the city's water code relative to water service provided by the Canyon City Water Department, Water Activity Enterprise.
Uh, this ordinance before you uh, increases the water rates by nine percent. Uh, again, this is mostly to cover inflationary issues that we see before the water departments. Um, the, the cost of uh, pipe, pipe fittings, chemicals uh, all across the board has, we've seen various uh, increases, uh, some in the double digits and uh, be happy to turn it over to Superintendent Payne to talk a little bit more about the pain that he's feeling in that area.
That includes too, even just the, the coal for filtering, just a lot of the energy movements that have been made for requirements. You don't think about it, you think about for your energy bill and solar, but it's all actually really affecting the costs for providing filtering for clean water.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's in a nutshell. I mean, throw a dart and everything, anything you're going to hit is going to go up in price. Um, like Ryan Stephen said, you know, our water stock bid, which covers all our pipe and, and fittings went up this year by forty-nine percent, you know, and that's, that's who knows what it's going to go up for next year. I tried emailing Corin Maine and they're working on it, but to see what the expected uh, increase is going to be for next year, but they haven't got it back to me on that. But uh, like chlorine this year has already gone up fourteen percent and just because they won't hold pricing in more than a quarter. So every quarter, we've pretty much seen increases on chlorine already this year. And that's not to say what they're going to increase for twenty twenty-three, aluminum sulfate, another big chemical we use. I was told it's going to be significant. I don't know what significant is, but it's probably going to be a lot, uh, because it's going to be more than the Denver inflationary uh, number that they are allowed to extend their contract. They already said it's not going to be that, which I think they were assuming is going to be like seven or eight percent or something like that. So it's definitely going to be more than that. Such as a few examples, some of our larger items that, you know, it just costs a lot more to do what we do.
So that's just inflationary things that have happened probably within this last year. But you have a lot of other challenges in providing clean water to Canyon City. I know your budget is more than super tight, like you're making things happen. We, um, can you, can I give some more highlights of what some of those defrayed costs that we.
Yeah, I mean, so you brought one up, the, the filter media would be a, a really good highlight of that. That we had budgeted four hundred thousand to all twelve of our filters, a complete media replacement, and that was budgeted in twenty twenty-two. And so when I went back to get budgetary numbers to make sure that we were going to fall into that, uh, before I put the bids out, the numbers came back at nine hundred thousand. And that was a large mix of freight costs. It's a lot of material to move uh, across uh, multiple states. Another one is what you alluded to, coal has become more expense, um, expensive. So we use anthocycle as one of our filter medias and it just has become more expensive. It's a very volatile market right now.
What about like for having to fix water mains, replacing water mains?
Yeah, not only the price, uh, price, like I said, forty-nine percent, and that's if we can get it. So we're seeing delivery times of what we just ordered, uh, a lot of brass fittings and if I remember right, those delivery times were like eighteen weeks. So we're definitely not getting any more brass this year. Um, we're doing okay on inventory, but through that, I mean, there's a lot more we could be doing that we're not because we're, we're making sure we have the proper inventory for emergencies.
And let's talk a little bit about the, where we've designated some of our ARPA funding and that's the American Rescue Plan that we were able to receive some money from the federal government floor and we dedicated some of that towards some really important capital investments at the water department. Can you highlight some of those?
Yeah, so one of them um, is going to be the filter media. So we'll be able to use some of our existing water funds and then kind of add on to that through ARPA funds to make that project happen. And then the really large one is kind of revamping our PLC program, our SCADA. So that's basically the all the electronics and the brains behind the water treatment plant and our pump stations and things of that nature. So a lot of that uh, instrumentation is circa uh, mid nineties, I think ninety-eight was, was the year that we kind of have a large overhaul of, of a lot of that stuff and we had a kind of inventory used through our large distributor, Rexel. And as of January one, a lot of that stuff is going to be discontinued. So we're not going to be able to get the, the parts, um, even the parts we can get. But we can't get because of large lead times, but they're just going to simply discontinue it. So that's going to be a really large one. I think there was seven hundred fifty thousand put towards that and you know, that's going to be a full year project. That's a giant project. That's going to really, really improve uh, water treatment plant capabilities.
And that's, and by dedicating those um, American Rescue Plan funds for that extremely large project, that's one way, hopefully, we can offset these water rate increases by doing that.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, as a matter of fact, um, if, if you actually go back and look at the rate study presentation back in two thousand seventeen, our former uh, water superintendent Bob Artzman uh, actually made several references to the SCADA system and it, you know, items being discontinued back in two thousand seventeen. And that, those were some of the big uh, purchases uh, driving some of, some of that increase uh, back in twenty seventeen. So having the ARPA funds available to help offset some of these types of improvements uh, will help uh, you know, defray some of those costs to the ratepayers in the long term.
I wish, I wish I could do more. Okay, council.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, another key part of the study recommendations that you referenced Administrator Stevens was um, to bring the municipal and golf customers up to the same rates as the other commercial customer class. Right now, we are still holding with the golf course and the municipal rate is still being lower than other commercial businesses. Um, and I'm concerned that we're in, in effect subsidizing the golf courses. So I'm wondering, can you share with us? How much does it cost the city to treat four thousand gallons? And then what would the golf course actually be paying for four thousand gallons? Just to give us a little bit of a sense of what those numbers look like.
So um, one of the things I did was run kind of a cost per thousand. So I'll back up just a minute. So kind of a cautionary tale with price per thousand gallon numbers are it's just telling you what you are spending, not what you should be spending. So that's kind of, kind of the big caveat to price per thousand. But it's also kind of a benchmark for where you're sitting. So I did run for like a twenty twenty-one um, for our large budgets, a water admin, which includes fund transfers and debt service, utility billing, water treatment, water distribution, capital projects. Came up with a, with a sum amount and then um, thousands of gallons diverted from the river. And so that number came up to five dollars and ten cents that we have budgeted uh, per thousand gallons diverted. Okay, so I kind of made the judgment call to use funds budgeted because that's monies we have to have available. Some of the, we don't use. You know, we, we of course be as uh, fiscally conservative as we can, you know, so there are things though, like electricity is a big one, you know, there, there are years we may have to pump more water and so we have to have that uh, electricity budget larger. Um, but we still have to have that budget. So that's why I decided to use uh, dollars budgeted rather than spend. So again, that was uh, five dollars and ten cents per thousand uh, gallons.
So I think my, my concern is that with some of these rates, as they're currently proposed, we're looking for the golf course, for example, we're looking at two dollars and thirty-seven cents per thousand gallons. So this is in fact, like the rest of the city um, uh, water users subsidizing the golf course. Um, and there are a couple of other uh, schedules in here for different user groups that are significantly lower than our commercial rates within the city. And even in some instances, they're lower than our residential rates within the city. So I'm just, I'm really concerned that we're picking winners and losers and that we're allowing some individuals and some entities to be subsidized by others. And that's, that's really disconcerting to me. Especially because it's indirect contravention to the recommendations coming out of our twenty seventeen water study to, to ensure that we actually are appropriately funded for the long term. Thanks.
Well, and to, sorry, do you mind? Um, to be clear, from that, from that water rate study from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, we did do a thirty-two percent increase to the golf course. To your point, they are still low, but um, some work has been done. They did, they did catch a thirty-two percent increase in their price per thousand as well as before then, they didn't uh, they didn't have to have a meter charge the way that like a residential would. There's a, a basic meter charge as well as your consumption uh, billed. So then they started paying for that meter charge as well.
Yeah, so like way, I don't even know when, way, 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 once upon a time Shadow Hills Golf Course was getting significant water rate um, reductions. And then when the other golf course came into town, they said, well, that's not fair. I can't be competitive. I, I should get the same um, reduction. And so it was granted. I don't know when that was, but it was a long time ago. Do you want, it sounds like you have some more backstory to go.
Uh, again, going back and watching a lot of videos. Um, what was relayed in the two thousand seventeen rate study about where some of these uh, rates came from uh, was actually related to Cotter. Uh, so going back, I think
Oh, that goes back.
It was, it was two thousand twelve or so where Cotter had a transmission line of raw water and uh, at the uh, behest of the city, we asked them to uh, abandon that raw water line for treated water. Um, because we were asking them to move to treated water, um, you know, we didn't felt, feel like it was fair to ask them to pay for the treated water because it wasn't their idea to move. They, they were happy with the raw water. Well, because the Shadow Hills Golf Course was also getting their water from the same transmission line and that line was going away, they asked for the same rate that Cotter was receiving. And then uh, as the mayor indicated, Four Mile Ranch asked to get the same deal as the uh, Shadow Hills deal. And then eventually the city, you know, asked for the same thing. So and, and I, I may be off on that timing as far as two thousand twelve. I don't know the exact date, but that date's kind of sticky in my head, but it may have been further back.
Well, it was.
It was. Yeah, I don't remember the city asking for the same. I don't know, my memory is not.
No, this, I believe this, this might have happened like in the eighties or something. Yeah, the, the, the issue was, the issue was uh, Cotter could uh, have rights to draw from the river. Uh, and traded those rights away for the, a break on the treated water, which uh, to, just to as a historical side note, I'm putting on my metallurgical engineer hat on here for just a second. That the uh, the using treated water at Cotter probably was the primary cause of their failure to process or profitably during the last processing period. The issue was free chlorine in the water that had a very deleterious circuit effects. That was never studied nor anticipated.
So that caused all kinds of problems that we are still dealing with in twenty twenty-two. Um, part of the discussion when we raised it by thirty-two percent, we knew that was really huge. We also, a lot of discussion was about how if you just instantly raise a business's water cost by thirty-two percent with a snap of the finger that they're going to go under. And that was the one and only golf course in Canyon City when Shadow Hills was going to go under. There was a lot of community members that wanted the city to buy Shadow Hills and keep it going as a municipal golf course and said that, well, at least we need to have a golf course for quality of life and um, and as a business attraction. So that was kind of where those conversations were. However, there still are conversations in Ryan, I probably can't, I don't know if that can be discussed publicly, but there still are some negotiations on trying to help the golf course maybe go on to raw, while water with some little bit more teeth um, and motivation for them to actually do that. Um, that would probably be future discussions. And even tonight, I don't think we can solve this problem, but.
Sorry, my concern is that I raised this issue at this meeting last year. Um, and was told that the city would look at it and would look at the, all of the different rate categories that we have and that this year we would get a different proposal. But essentially we're getting the exact same proposal again with a flat across the board, nine percent increase for all of the existing rate categories. And I do not in any way think that we should say, ah, this one should be increased by this amount and this one should be made the same as that one. But I don't want to have the same conversation again in November, December, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, I don't know if I remember a promise being made.
Oh, I don't know that there was a promise. I just said, I would like, this is something. Oh, I don't know that there was a promise, I just said, I would like, this is something I would like to see in, before we come back here twenty twenty-three. Um, or before we come back here twenty twenty-two.
So a- as I referenced on, on with the stormwater rates, we are looking for grant funding to redo the rate study and try and find a way to um, you know, look, look at this again and, you know, the, the data's old, um, you know, our costs have changed as well with all the inflation, so, uh, having that new rate study would help with that discussion, so um, we are moving that direction, I don't know that we will have that proposal or uh, even the study underway by the time we do this next year, uh, but we are planning on that study for twenty twenty-four.
Councilmember Tracy's been in the queue for a while now, so I want to make sure we get to you.
Okay, thanks. Several things occur to me, uh, I had a similar question that I emailed that, that, um, Travis Payne answered, uh, kind of in the same way, that maybe to look at these rates differently for the golf courses course or courses that we need to have a new study or have that be part of a new study. It's a real interesting thing, and I'm, I'm assuming that the whole thing about getting rid of the raw water line to Cotter and shut, Cotter and Shadow Hills was longer ago than twenty twelve, because twenty eleven was when Cotter made the decision, I think, to shut down permanently. So I, it'd be interesting to find out what that year is, and, and I have to say, for historical purposes, that when I was on council in the eighties, I was alone in fighting the really, really cheap rates that Cotter was getting, and because they were on the same line, if I recall correctly, that Shadow Hills was getting. So there's a long history here, and I am with everyone who wants to kind of change that history, it's just a question of when and how to do that, but I, I don't I, I really do think we need to change there.
Councilmember Smith.
This question is for Travis, is it typical for golf courses to water with treated water?
Um, less and less.
It's getting less and less.
Less and less for sure.
Cause it seems like we're.
Like this.
Yeah, we're one of the only men, like, I guess they're not a municipal golf course, but we're one of the only municipalities with a golf course that utilizes treated water.
Sure, I'd, I'd, I, I couldn't comment about how many other municipalities do it. Uh, I know like reuse from sanitation plants is becoming bigger and bigger, so instead of a sanitation plan, discharging into a river that
Is there, is there water rights close to the golf course that could be obtained or, or raw water?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, there, there is raw water close, but I mean, that's, that's kind of a private business.
Different conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome, I was just checking.
Make, we, we can, well, I don't know.
It just doesn't seem very typical that they would water with treated water.
Well, I mean, and you see it less and less in the air west, for sure, you know, if you have something in, in the east coast where they're getting rain all the time or Pacific Northwest, it's of course, way less of an issue, but when you're talking to high desert, then, you know, you gotta use a lot of water.
Yeah, thank you.
And that, that conversation alludes to what the mayor was speaking about earlier.
Yes, just, just one other comparison, so like I know we've spent a lot of time talking about affordable housing and about the importance of having housing that members of our community can afford, so the inside multi-unit rate for a thousand gallons of water or more is more than double the golf course rate and the municipal rate. Like, it, it's, it's just not acceptable, um, and I'm not, I don't want to wait until December twenty twenty-four to change this. Is there a way that we can bring that study forward and do this analysis in twenty twenty-three? So that when we're having this conversation, then we can have something that it sounds like is more in line with what council's direction is, thanks.
Right now, it's not currently budgeted, so we would have to redo the budget and, um, we are seeking grant funds. There, there are other pieces to this that we're trying to analyze from a holistic standpoint, uh, which uh, includes looking at a water master plan, which updates the capital projects that we need to look at, uh, in order to determine how, how much those rates should change. Um, you know, comparatively speaking.
Um, Councilmember Smith.
Just refresh my memory, this was before I was on council, but, um, wasn't there something worked out with Four Mile Ranch because of the housing that they were promising? There, there was something.
That was a previous incentive agreement to try and help them, encourage them to, uh, move
a little quicker on building, okay, I, I thought there was something, there was a reason that water rates were lowered based on.
Well, that, that incentive agreement was put in place to help soften the blow of the rate increase.
So it gave them like a grace period to catch up to their thirty-two percent increase. Which they are, by the way, they are getting their nine percent plus increase, sounds like we need to have some more discussion, I don't know.
Schmisher, um, I mean, we do have a, a rate study from twenty seventeen. And it does have recommendations, including to bring the municipal rate and the golf course rate into line with the other commercial classes. Actually by twenty twenty, so while I appreciate that we did some significant increases and changes with them in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, is there a reason why we can't use the, the study that was already done to start bringing some of this into effect? So that we don't have to wait two additional years.
Um, sounds like we have some more golf course discussions, there's other things, maybe about that entire subdivision in general, that would be really enlightening. And, um, COVID consequence in some COVID impacts to the golf course as well, that, um, need to be taken to potentially taken into consideration, Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
Thank you for that, Madam Mayor, I, I would just, in, in response to Councilwoman Schmisher, I would, I would just say, it really needs to be having sat through those conversations, it really needs to be a holistic, uh, approach and that, that it's, it's really difficult to pick and choose which rates you want to raise without looking at the whole um, the whole spectrum, uh, because there's, there's lots of, there's lots of, uh, consequences for, for instance, if the city and the golf course have the same rate and we raise those rates, then all of a sudden we do have, that is a budget impact to the city, uh, and that does have to, the money has to come from somewhere. Uh, you know.
Absolutely, I'm not suggesting that we pick and choose different rate classes to change, I'm just saying we have a study in place, and if we're unable to have a new study done next year, could we look at the study that we already have and increase the rate classes according to the holistic study that we've already commissioned, but that we did not fully implement.
Travis.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, with council direction, I mean, tell me what to do and I'll do it.
Councilmember Tracy.
Perhaps between first and second reading, we could see what the language of that twenty seventeen study is and see if there's anything we can act on, I, not having been around at that time, I don't know, not only what the study says but whether there's any commentary from council at that time related to that issue specifically, so it'd be helpful to know.
And Ryan, we did ask to get copies of that two thousand seventeen study and they're not here.
My apologies, we can send those out.
That would be really helpful.
It is on the website and we will, will forward a link to, to that.
In the meantime, I think we are we need to still address the ordinance on hand, obviously, there's still some more discussion and some things that we need to do based on that two thousand seventeen study and, and, and hopefully to get that grant for future study. But we do have, um, ordinance twenty-four series of twenty twenty-two that could use a motion. Councilmember Tracy.
I move that we approve, uh, ordinance number twenty-four series of twenty twenty-two on first reading. Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Very reluctantly, aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Nay.
Councilmember B Smith.
Nay.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammer.
Aye.
The motion does pass. Um, there's more work to be done, obviously, we have some difficult discussions, but we can do that. However, that is the last item on the agenda and this meeting is adjourned.